Good evening, everyone. Busy evening and delighted to see all of you here. And please excuse our tardiness. I don't know if you noticed, but I was wearing a T-shirt here just a little bit ago. Let's give this a round of applause. Whoa. You will all have one soon enough, right? Okay. I don't know what he said. What did he say? Well, the benchmark is that you get one. The outcome is that you own it. I guess that's tied to the benchmark. The indicator will be if all of you wear them one time at a board meeting. So the outcome will be that each of you will have one, right? Does that work, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you again, everyone. And we're here actually for some serious business. So before we start, I would like to note that we're live captioning our meetings. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So again, good evening, and I'd now like to call this meeting of the public hearing of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of May 23, 2023. There is no requirement for roll. So I'm going to move us into actually the item on the agenda for this evening, which is review our truth and taxation notice of levy increase. This is a hearing as required under state law. The Maricopa County Community College District is considering a proposal to increase the primary property taxes in fiscal year 2023, '24 on existing property. The proposed increase is 2.86%, which equals $16,023,901 in additional property tax revenues from existing property. At this time, I will afford any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to address the governing board concerning the proposed action under consideration to increase the primary property taxes on existing property. Are there any comments from members of the board? Oh, excuse me. I do see a hand to address this. Actually, I have you noted, Mrs. Pleasant, for another conversation on transparency and policy and procedures, not on taxation. Ms. Falkenberg, are you present this evening? Is she? Of course, you're present this evening. Sorry. Is that allowable under the statute to allow her to speak without outside of citizens interim on this, without notice? If you, Ms. Pleasant, you're welcome to come to the podium. You can speak to taxation exclusively, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
That we will be unduly taxed. A lot of the new homeowners that are being moved to our location have got $500,000 and $600,000 homes. And I would really appreciate if we would consider perhaps taxing those new homeowners in our communities and not putting that burden on the existing homeowners. So that's my concern, that we need to show transparency and fairness and equity and equitability when it comes to these taxations. So that's my two cents. I didn't know that I had this opportunity to speak. Otherwise, I would have been better prepared.
Thank you.
Okay. And I know that you're not supposed to respond to me during a citizen's interim, but this is not the citizen's interim. Can you tell me whether or not this levy will be passed, moved forward, or it's going to be open for reconsideration?
We're voting on the budget this evening in our special meeting, which follows our public hearing.
And how is the public normally informed about this?
Ms. Grineo, would you like to answer? It's been publicly noted in multiple media sources, and we've had meetings regarding this. Thank you, Ms. Grineo.
Certainly. Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board. So yes, by statute, we are required to publish in the newspaper twice what our legal budget is, as well as any sort of a property tax increase, which we've done. We are required to issue a press release, including the same information, which really is the information in the first three paragraphs on the board item. So that is what gets published and noticed. And if I could add to potentially address Ms. Pleasant's comments. So the tax rate is applied to all existing property in the county. And it is that two-point, I'm sorry, it was off the top of my head. The 2.86% increase is on average across all property taxpayers. So for areas that have higher growth in property values, their amount might increase a little bit more than potentially a homeowner that sees a lower value in their valuation of their property. So it's applied the same way as all property taxes throughout the county. So we talk about existing taxes. It's about the properties that already exist on the tax rules at the time. There is another element to taxpayers, which is about new construction. So when you have vacant land that gets purchased and gets converted to something else that typically has a higher tax rate, that comes to us in the new construction area of it. And then any increases later on get applied as the years go on. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Grineo. Are there any comments from members of the board on the truth and taxation element of this evening's hearing? Being done, that concludes the truth and taxation hearing. Now going to go on to the second item for this evening's hearing, and that is the review of the proposed Maricopa County Community College District fiscal year 23, '24 budget. This is also pursuant to an agenda item number D3, a public hearing concerning the adoption of the proposed budget of the Maricopa County Community College District for fiscal year 23, '24. This hearing is also required under state law. The purpose of the hearing is to give any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to protest the inclusion of any item in the proposed budget. So at this time, I will afford any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to address the governing board concerning the proposed action under consideration. Does anyone wish to come forward? Being none, are there any comments from members of the board? Being none, I'm going to conclude and adjourn the public hearing. Thank you. So now, we're going to move on to the special session for the governing board. So for the record, I'm going to call to order this special session. And first, I'm going to call for roll of board members. I'm going to call an alphabetic order, and I'm going to start with you, Ms. Burnett, our student trustee. Are you present?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
With my presence, this is showing all seven board members are present, and includes, and we also include our student trustee this evening. So now we're moving on to approval of truth and taxation tax of the increase for fiscal year 23, '24. This is a motion to levy the increased property taxes as previously described. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move. I'll let Dr. Thor.
That was an echo. Dr. Thor, you've made the motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Being none, I need a roll call vote in accordance with state law. So Ms. Bittersmith, you vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Butler? Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Norini?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Thor? I also vote aye. And Mr. Burnett, you're present.
Aye.
Thank you. With that, we have a seven oh vote of board members and a compliment to that vote by our student trustee. So the motion will carry with a full unanimous vote. Thank you. We're now moving on to adopt the proposed Maricopa County Community College District fiscal year 23, '24 budget. That's item E3 of the agenda, and it's to approve the proposed budget. Do I have a motion? Excuse me, before that. In approving the budget, the board will also authorize the expenditure of budgeted revenues and realized or designated fund balances within the total amount budgeted in each fund, general fund, auxiliary, plant fund, quasi-endowment, restricted, and debt service. The board has been presented with a budget that should be acted on whether or not the board approved the 2.86 increase in the existing tax levy, whichever we just approved. If, moving on then, I'm looking for a motion to accept the motion as presented, item as presented.
President Sullivan, I move that we accept the budget as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Norini. Is there any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, in accordance again with state law, the governing board will now vote on this motion by roll call vote. Start with you, Ms. Bittersmith.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Dr. Norini?
Aye.
Dr. Thor? Maurice Sullivan, aye vote, yes as well. Dr. Burnett, Mr. Burnett?
Aye. You keep promoting me. No comment, right?
By a vote of seven zero with the student trustee's vote, the motion carries seven zero plus. And so the 22, '23 Maricopa Community College budget has been adopted. That concludes the special meeting, and we are now adjourned from that meeting. Now that we're adjourned, I can say, I didn't have any coffee before this meeting. Oh, my gosh. For something so incredibly important, my apologies for a few stumbles there. Please forgive me. So now, we're going to move on to a most exciting meeting for the end of the academic year. The May meeting always has tremendous number of presentations and good reports to hear from so many people. So we're looking forward to that. Again, for the record, I want to announce we are live captioning this meeting as well. And again, if you're online, please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So at this time, I call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for May 23, 2023. For the record again, I'm now going to call roll of board members, and I'm going to start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Butler?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
Still here.
Ms. Smith?
Present.
Dr. Thor? Thank you. With my presence, we have a full complement of board members present this evening and our student trustee. We will now move to the pledge of allegiance. And Dr. Gonzalez, would you lead us this evening in the pledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. We do have some substitutions in attendance. We have Mr. Christos Kronos, Development Director, Institutional Development for Dr. Tammy Robinson, president of Mesa Community College. We also have Dr. Patricia Dame, Vice President of Student Affairs for Dr. Ray Rivera of Estrella Mountain Community College. We're going to start off again with a student life report in this evening's from Rio Salado College. So welcome. Please join us at the podium. Please introduce yourselves, and we'll move on.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests. My name is John Bastian. I'm the coordinator of student life at Rio Salado College here. And along with me tonight are two of our, two of Rio's outstanding students, Brianna Bonal, Becca Namachanja. And they will share with you our college's student life report for the current academic year that is soon closing. And thank you for this opportunity. Brianna?
Hello. Greetings, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests. I am Brianna Bonal. I'm a full-time student at Rio Salado, currently studying global management with my end goal being to be an attorney, an international attorney. I am a wife and mother of two, so I do full-time, and I have my kids. And I found a lot of value from Rio Salado and the way that the school is set up to help students like me achieve excellence. Thank you. And now I'm going to introduce Becca. Next slide.
All right. President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name is Becca Namachanja. I am a student here at Rio Salado, pursuing a degree in behavioral health sciences. My eventual goal as well is to obtain a graduate degree in psychology. I'm also a case manager full-time with Community Bridges. Community Bridges is a nonprofit here locally that provides mental and behavioral health services in the valley. Also listed above are some of the activities that I participated in this year. And so we will go a little bit in depth in general, as well as specific to what we participated in as well. Next slide, please. So Phi Theta Kappa is an honor society that is open to all community college students nationwide, the National Society for Leadership and Success. That is a leadership honor society, and that is also open to community as well as university students nationwide. We also had individuals or students that participated in the Student Public Policy Forum. That is a district-wide opportunity for students to be engaged with public policy. Both myself and Brianna were a part of each one of these. I was a part of PTK. Brianna was a part of the 2022, 2023 cohort of NSLS. And we both were members of SPIF, or as we like to refer to ourselves, we were SPIFers this year. Next slide, please. Along with those, there are other activities that a lot of students participate in, such as the honors program, which both me and Becca are a part of. So you take an honors course and you get extra work, and it gives you a lot of prestige and opportunities to prove yourself as a dedicated student. Furthermore, we have the Chancellor Civic Leadership Medalion, which three students from Rio received. And I believe Rio had the most students receive this award out of any of the schools. So it was quite a treat for us. And there are other student life overviews points there as well. Next slide, please. And now I'm going to share with you guys about my Student Public Policy Forum. It was a great, great opportunity for me because I am an online student, and I mainly just with my children. I don't have enough time to have a job because both of my children are small. So this gave me an excellent opportunity to work every Friday very closely, not only with our professors and faculty, but we've gotten to meet with senators. We got to go to the state ledge, which led us to go to Washington, DC. And I advocated for Pell Grant extension to independent students, as well as for DACA students. Becca went, and she went for the Promise Program, which is offered here in Mesa. And we both did really well. They were very impressed with us. And it was awesome because we took all of the skills we learned in the Student Public Policy Forum, and we used that to advocate for our entire community at a national level, which is not something a lot of students around the United States can say that they did from a community college. And so with that, I got so much out of that experience, and I look forward to doing more in public policy. And I have a policy I'm going to be doing next session. So, next slide. I tried to wear the highest heels I could find because I needed to be standing next to her. But so I will be highlighting my activities with Phi Theta Kappa. Like I said, PTK is a national organization, honors organization. And I'll actually say, next slide, please. And I think the most impactful experience for me, like I, when I initially came into Rio Salado, this was just a means to an end to advance my professional. It was more about professional development. But through this Honors in Action, which is a project that PTK offers to students, what it is, is an opportunity for students to identify an issue within their community, perform academic research, partner up with community members, staff, and faculty on creating some type of a solution. And through that whole process, it kind of broadened my idea of what it is that it was to be a student and sort of expanded my academic, as well as professional goals. Hence the reason why I now want to pursue a graduate degree following my completion here at Rio. And so just to echo what was said earlier, by the end of the research project that we did, a research paper that we submitted, and just in jest, we were also referring to each other as doctors. So. But just to wrap everything up, I think what we really wanted to share about student life, especially for us as Rio students, because we are a fully online college, that can somewhat be of an isolating experience. For me, I know I started at Rio in the middle of the pandemic. So not only was I isolated as a student, but I was, it was myself and my dog in my apartment. And so being, having all the student life opportunities, I think that's why we both really, you know, jumped onto everything that we did and filled up our plates the way we did, was it gives you an opportunity for engagement. With PTK, for example, their four pillars that they expound so much are scholarship, leadership, service. And for me, the one that stood out the most is the last one, which is fellowship. Because I got to fellowship with my fellow students, both locally within this region and nationally, through the different experiences that Rio Salado has to offer. And so with that, we'll bring our presentation to a close. We thank you so much for giving us the opportunity. And if you all have any questions or comments, we would love to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I do have a question. If I may, board members, what policy will you be working on next year? We may need to sign you up.
Yes. So currently, I have a few of the state legislators actually listening to me. Speaker Ben Toma, I met with him because it will need to be represented in the Republican side because of everything going on currently. But it's going to be for foster youth right now. We have a really high amount of kids going into congregate facilities versus foster care. And we believe it's because of the low stipends and low incentives. So we're basically going to try to increase the budget for stipends, as well as food stamps or health insurance for the families that do decide to take on a child into their house. But we're also working with numbers and everything else right now. So it will be an appropriations policy.
We wish you the absolute best of luck. And I know Dr. Britt, who's running center here, has a very strong personal interest in this with your foster kids group as well. And we wish you the best of luck and go for it.
Thank you so much.
And I have another question. So in your Honors in Action, you said you did some good research. What was your research paper on? And I expect you to be a doctor next time we see you.
Oh, absolutely. It will happen.
I can call you doctor.
Yes, please set the stage for me. But so the issue that we identified was all of us coming out of the pandemic, we sort of did research on why is it that completion rates and academic performance for online students, not just locally, but nationally, as well as internationally or globally, which is one of the requirements of the Honors in Action? Why are the numbers so different? And the two big things that we identified were technological issues and then feelings of isolation that result in demotivation, in addition to all the other things that a person who opts to pursue an online degree has to deal with. So that was the gist of our research. We looked into how, you know, the brain under stress, how does that work when you're trying to retain information, let alone recall it in a testing setting? We looked at, on a social level, what do the different income or social demographics, how do those affect, you know, when a student's laptop breaks midway through the semester? And they're a mother of two, or they're a full-time employee, they might not have the extra funds, and that could result in them having to drop out and possibly never, ever going back. So we were able to look at all of those. And then there's a service and an action piece that required us to really engage the community to come up with some type of a solution. I mean, I got the opportunity to work with President Kate, John Bastian, he's our student life, as well as our advisor for PTK, and just a number of faculty heads who contributed and helped. And so for this year, what we're working on, we actually won a grant, the Horizon Grant. And we will be enforcing, we've had a number of iterations. It went from real rest stop to the take a break activity. And what it'll be, it'll be a portal that's embedded inside of the coursework, online coursework, that kind of leads you into different exercises, you know, art therapy exercises, yoga, deep breathing, so that as you're progressing through your class, your actual class, you know, there'll be an opportunity for you to say, okay, you know what? Let me take a quick break. And instead of calling someone on the phone, possibly losing focus, you can do that. You can even perform it. If you have kids, you can have your kids do it with you. That way, it's you studying, but you're also engaging in quality time with family.
Excellent. Wow. Well, let's give them another round of applause. Both he has that. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck to both of you. Yes?
Add something that's really cool?
Sure.
Okay. Well, how she was just talking about that, we, for Student Public Policy Forum, we actually had a project we had to do for the campus, and me and Becca worked together and presented to President Kate because Rio Salado has no assistance for tech. So if you don't have a laptop or anything, that there's not really anything they can do, which is insane because it's all online. So what we did was we put together this presentation, and basically now we're in, it's in the works to get a tech pantry here at Rio, and it connects to what she did to PTK. So it's just really cool, and I wanted to make sure we mention that to you guys. Thank you.
Well, we'll look forward to hearing how this proceeds. So congratulations again. Good job. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to a student senate report presented by Matthew Yantos, who's the senate chair. Mr. Burnett, would you like to introduce Mr. Yantos to all of us?
This is Matt Yantos from the flagship school of CGCC, and he's the student senate chair, engineering student, be moving on to ASU, I believe, next year.
Correct.
I see him everywhere I go. He is constantly on the move. He's done a great job taking over and leading the senate. And I know that they have got a great rapport. I'm looking forward to it. I couldn't, I couldn't wait to get here tonight just to see all the senators here, and hopefully all of them will get a chance to speak. But man, very proud of you for what you've done. Sorry to lose you to another school next year, but you've done a great job in your year here. So I really appreciate you.
Thank you, Lynn. I really appreciate that. Well, it's going to be tough to follow up, ladies. But good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name is Matt Yantos, and I'm the chair of the Maricopa Student Senate. And today, I'm going to present a few accomplishments of the student senate. Next slide, please. Here's all of the students, senators. The ones that we have here are myself representing Chandler Gilbert Community College, Connor Haran, Joe Quiata, Ayana Churchill, Heather Robinson, and Imelda Hartley. Next slide. Oh. Each month, we attended online meetings to discuss concerns and possible plans of action relative to our own campuses and how to solve these issues at the district level. We use these discussions to better apply the voice of all students to help steer the future direction of the Maricopa Community College District. Next slide, please. These are a list of events that the senators have attended in support of their local campuses and communities. I won't read through all of them, but I'm just going to go through a couple of them. Some Some include the student town halls with Chancellor Gonzalez, the dinners and meetings with the governing board. And one of the bigger ones for our student senators was the professional etiquette dinner. Next slide, please. To ensure positive student experience, the Maricopa Student Senate reviewed proposed changes for 2023-2024 catalog common pages and provided feedback to the Office of Public Stewardship. After reviewing the Maricopa Community College District Financial Plan and Budget Needs Presentation, the Maricopa Student Senate supported the tuition increase for the fiscal year 2023-2024 academic year during the December 2022 Governing Board Meeting. And we also, myself, Connor Haran, and a few other student senators helped develop a firm foundation in this student senate handbook. Next slide, please. We have confidently chosen Mr. Lynn Burnett to remain in the student governing board position as he continues to put himself in front of others and will remain vigilant in this position, providing the best feedback possible to provide a bright future for those to come. Next slide, please. Our vital feedback was taken to ensure the safety of our district and helped shifted the appropriate measures to be taken in the district in regards to the social media application TikTok. We also provided user experience for the district marketing to determine the best layout and functionality for the student-facing pages. Next slide. Next slide, please. These are some of the committees that the student senate, student senators have also served on. That's Strategic Planning Committee, Provost Search Committee, Purpose Dialogue Day Planning Committee, Strategic Planning for PVCC Technology Advisory Group, and the Purpose Coalition. Next slide, please. The next two slides, I would like to highlight some of the accomplishments of our, of a couple of our senators. Heather May Robinson, Paradise Community College, has been an exceptional leader over the last two terms as student senator. She had showed excellent communication, accountability, and decision-making when faced with difficult tasks. Some of her awards include the All Arizona Award recipient, Positive Social Change Award, represented PVCC at the International PTK Catalyst Convention. Heather, thank you. Next slide, please. Emelda Hartley, Phoenix Community College, has consistently made an effort to better herself and others around her, no matter what the cost. Emelda's drive and enthusiasm motivates others to do the same as well. Her excellent leadership and commitment has earned her the following awards. President Biden's Volunteer Service Award, the MCCD Chancellor Civic Leadership Medallion, the 2023 Entrepreneur of the Year Award by the Arizona Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Next slide, please. Thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you today. Do I have any questions?
So, Matt, I know you're on the tail end, you're in short finals. But at the same time, I want to make a note of that's MSS Student Senate Handbook. That was a project that the senators took on. And could you just do a quick, brief explanation, just a shotgun blast of what that's all about and what it's for, the purpose of it?
Yeah, absolutely. So when we came as new senators into this position, we didn't have a firm foundation on what our tasks, our goals, our mission statements were. And we worked very hard over the last two terms to initialize the foundation and create a foundation for future student senators. So this outlines, you know, what to do, what do we do as a student senate? Because we, you know, we know we need to represent the voices of the students, but how do we do that? And so, one of my main goals was to help create a foundational document to help guide students coming into this role on what to do on their camp, on their camp, you know, relative to their campus, and in how to bring, you know, these issues into the next level of the student senate so they can be taken care of if necessary.
I know that the student senate has met primarily virtually the entire year. And it's a hangover from COVID, and I can understand that. What are the plans for next year? Are you guys still planning on doing all virtual, 50/50, meeting in person?
So it's going to be 100% in-person at the conference. It was tough doing it online, you know, just, you know, I'd prefer being in person myself. But, but next, yeah, next senate meetings will be held at the conference center and here at Rio.
And just one final comment. It's good to have young college students in an environment like this. It's good for you, I believe, and it's even, it's good for us. Because I believe in the adage that a rising tide rises all ships. And sometimes you have a college, young people that maybe are lost, not sure where to go. And you have young people like you guys, and I'm highlighting the, all the senators, but specifically the accomplishments of Emelda and Heather and you, and what Connor's done for the MSS. What you've done is you've purposely put yourself out there, which has caused a lot of people to run for president of their student body, to start a new club on campus, to go do things that make a difference. The things that you girls, you young ladies, girls, I apologize, young ladies did. It's gonna cause, whether you realize the effect it has or not, people are watching you and they see it. And they may not be willing to step up, but when they see people like you step up and do things that are probably out of your comfort zone, that rising tide rises all the rest of the ships in the colleges. So I appreciate all of you for what you've done. I think it's fantastic. Keep up the great work, buddy.
Thank you, Lynn.
Just a note on student senate. When Dr. Norene and I were both elected to the board, there were two standing board members. One was Dr. Linda Thor and the other was Mr. Dana Sar. And between both of them, they came up with and encouraged us to embrace the idea, first of all, of a student trustee sitting on the governing board. And secondly, to create the student senate. I'd like to acknowledge that Mr. Sar is in the audience with us this evening and Dr. Thor. But. So, great idea. And the evidence is down here and over there. So it was a great idea and we're better off for both of those. So congratulations to all of you. And also, congratulations to you, Mr. Burnett, for being able to sit with us for another year. I think. No. And again, thank you, Mr. Sar. We're glad you're here with us this evening. I'd like to move on to the Faculty Executive Council Report and welcome Dr. Masiel. Nice to see you.
Two very hard acts to follow. Very impressive.
Always hard to follow a student.
A point of protocol, Ms. Sullivan, before we begin. Given your repartee with Madame Monge last time, would you prefer to be called Madame la Président?
You know, there is something I was gonna say. You can call me whatever you want, and then I rethought that. Madame would be good, or Miss Sullivan, or.
Madame la Président.
Maria is actually French. It's not Maria, you know, that people equate into Italian. Yes, you rolled the R. That's very nice. Thank you. Whatever. Please, please proceed. How do I say your name?
Marcio. Marcio.
Thank you.
Madame la Président, members of the board, chancellor, CEC colleagues, friends and family. I am Dr. Lisa Marcio, and I am honored to be the Faculty Association President for the 2324 year. I'd like to take a moment to thank Dr. Camille Newton for her friendship, leadership, and mentorship over the past year. And as I say, for being the Ted Lasso to my Roy Kent. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do with this, Camille. I found it, and I'll leave it to you later. Rather than saying good evening, I will greet you with jumbo. Jumbo is a Swahili greeting that translates loosely as hi or hey. I use this not because of its informality, but rather because I cannot help but smile every time I say jumbo. And we, as a district, have much to smile about. Let me name a few. We have seen enrollments trending up in the past year, and we can hope that that will continue. We have launched seven baccalaureate degrees, and we have over 400 students enrolled already. We have saved our students millions through the use of OER materials. And task forces are being developed to look at everything from appropriate course fees to the use of artificial intelligence and other innovations in academia. Much to smile about. We have come together in a partnership of shared governance and begun to build a community of collegiality and trust. For example, governing board members, faculty, and staff worked collaboratively, transparently, and with lack of status in the room, on a strategic plan to move the Maricopa Community Colleges forward into an increasingly competitive academic world. Much to smile about. Perhaps the biggest thing we have to smile about, however, is our students, who continue to honor and humble us with the trust they place in us to be change agents in their lives for the better. Examples are both sides of me right now. Over the past two weeks, there has been great movement in the student population of our colleges. Many with degrees or credentials in hands are entering the workforce. Many with transfer credits in hand are matriculating to four-year universities. Some, such as the grandparent who took a social media class for their own edification and have mad skills in hand, are now embarrassing friends and family on TikTok. While their goals may vary, they take with them a bit of the Maricopa mystique that binds them together, be it a Scottsdale Fighting Artichoke, a South Mountain Cougar, or a PC Bear. Over the next few meetings, I hope to share happenings in the faculty world of Maricopa. More things that bring smiles to our faces, such as the work in the realm of teaching and learning that continues to occur in the summer. Stay tuned. With that, I would like to close tonight with a haiku on the semester's end. Books close, minds unfurl. Semesters end, knowledge gained, paths diverge, growth. Asante sana. Thank you in Swahili.
The Adjunct Faculty Association Report is in writing in your documents this evening, board members. So we're going to move to the staff representation update with Ms. Shannon Monge and Mr. Calvin Duall. I'm going to love saying that every time.
I honestly don't know, Calvin, how we are gonna follow up those last three presentations, but we will do the best we can. Lisa, I don't know if I'm gonna say this right. So is it Madame la Présidente? Members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests, my name is Shannon Monge, and I am the co-president for staff representation, along with my fellow co-president, Calvin Duall. Next slide, please. We want to give a shout out to our chancellor for being honored as an export champion of the year, given to him by Governor, excuse me, Phoenix Mayor Kate Gallego. I'll read just a little blurb from the article. You can see the link on our presentation if you want to read the full article. Mayor Gallego praised Dr. Gonzalez for his success of Route to Relief, a partnership between the Maricopa system and the city of Phoenix that utilizes the city's federal pandemic relief dollars to provide free tuition, monthly stipends, and employee, employment assistance to eligible city residents. Since the program's launch, over 400 students have been enrolled at one of the system's 10 colleges. When the chancellor accepted this award, he accepted it on behalf of nearly 12,000 faculty, staff, and administrators who dedicated their work to improving the lives of our community through higher education. Chancellor, thank you for recognizing the employees that helped with this goal. Well, we couldn't do it without a chancellor like you. So thank you, chancellor. Next slide, please. Once again, it is time to enroll in the Women's Mentor, the Linda B. Rosenthal Women's Mentor Program. It is one of the first professional development programs I participated in in Maricopa. And I can't thank the program enough for opening doors for me as well as learning more about myself and what I can do for Maricopa's employees and for its students. Applications are due June 1st. Each campus has a point of contact for the Women's Mentor Program. If you have any questions, if you don't know who that is, please feel free to email me or call me. Or I always shout out to Kathy Hernandez, who was one of the champions for the program for many years. So I really, really encourage, if you have thought of doing this as part of your growth within Maricopa, please, please, please sign up. Next slide, please. Every month, we try to focus on honoring some sort of celebration. And what we celebrated in May last week was National Law Enforcement Memorial Week. You saw a message from the chancellor, as well as from our sworn officer counsel through staff representation. I have linked what Police Week is, so you can read more about that. But what it does is it offers a time to have honor, remembrance, and peer support while allowing law enforcement, survivors, and citizens to gather and pay homage to those who gave their lives in the line of duty. We all know family members. We all know police officers. We also have students who are pursuing this career. So I encourage you to take the time to learn more about this and not only celebrate them this week, but throughout the year. I now hand it over to Calvin.
We would like to highlight the staff reps from Estre Mountain Community College. We have Henry Zugruro, Nadine Sellers, Lyle Burnett, Amida Ortega, Tracy Denton, and Rod Franklin. Next slide, please. As we close out the academic year of 2023, we want to give one last congratulations to the students, to employees, faculty, staff, everyone, the colleges. For all the commencements that we had, it was a great week. I hope everyone enjoyed it. There was some really great celebrations. And we just want to thank everyone. Next slide. And also for the terrific convocations that we had. We had a lot of staff, not only volunteer, but worked the convocations, the commencements. And we just want to say one last huge thank you for another great academic year. Next slide. And as always, if you need to contact us, our contact information is in the last slide, as always. Thank you, board.
Thank you. So now we're going to move on to the next agenda item, and that is the presentation from Maricopa Community College Foundation. This is their semi-annual presentation to the board. Mr. Brian Spiker, President CEO, Stephanie Hertzberg, the board's chair, and Julie Reese, the board vice chair, with us this evening. And Mr. Spiker, I don't know how to say your last name in French, so I'm going to.
It's German.
Which is why I can't say it in French. So with that, welcome, everyone. Delighted to have you with us this evening, Mr. Spiker. Podeum yours.
Great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Hertzberg, and I am Chair of the Foundation Board. And it is an honor to be here tonight for our semi-annual review at the Governing Board Meeting. I want to thank President Sullivan, Governing Board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC members and guests for the opportunity. This is a little bittersweet since it is my last opportunity to present to the Governing Board as Chair. I will say that I am extremely happy with where the foundation is, not just from a fundraising perspective, but from our relationship with the district, the governing board, and the colleges. It's really been an incredible time to be in the foundation. And I would like to say that that work would not be possible without the amazing staff and board members that we have, including Brian Spiker. Without his tireless leadership, we could not have accomplished the so many amazing things that we're gonna talk about tonight. So I'd be remiss if I did not recognize his efforts here in this forum. Brian will be sharing some of that information on our accomplishments. And Julie Reese, our incoming chair, will also be presenting with us this evening. Our mission is to boldly impact our communities through innovative and strategic partnerships for the growth and benefit of the Maricopa Community Colleges, its students, faculty, and staff. The foundation manages over 1,000 funds and works with over 60 million in assets tied to endowments and restricted funds. Additionally, we work to raise funds every day for scholarships, program supports for colleges, as well as emergency and basic needs funding for students. While the foundation continues to build its pool of scholarship funding to cover the cost of education, we know the basic needs for students is a growing concern. We know that many of the barriers for retention and completion are tied to the cost of attendance, everyday life challenges, and that is why we are doubling down on raising money for that area of need. In the last 24 months, the foundation has awarded over $750,000 in basic and emergency needs funding. Lastly, the Foundation Board and staff leverage their relationships in the community to advance district and college objectives with a focus on workforce and industry partnerships and student supports. Now I'd like to introduce Julie Reese, incoming board. Now I'd like to introduce Julie Reese, incoming board chair.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Perfect. It's such a pleasure to be with you tonight to really talk more about the foundation. We are very grateful for the strong level of connection between this governing board and the foundation board itself. So as you look at this slide, you'll see a lot of familiar names. We benefit tremendously from the participation of governing board member Butler, Dr. Nirene, excuse me, Chancellor Gonzalez, Dr. Smith, I'm forgetting, Dr. Rivera, who couldn't be here tonight. But so I wanted to specifically note how grateful we are for the participation of governing board members on the foundation board. It really helps to facilitate greater communication and connection between the two entities. And at the end of the day, we're both here to serve the students. So again, very grateful for that. I did want to note, couldn't agree more with Stephanie's comments about how fortunate we are to have Brian as president and CEO, but we're also benefiting tremendously from Stephanie's leadership as chairwoman. And so I wanted to publicly thank her, and please join me in recognizing. All right. So foundation board is a volunteer board. As Brian likes to say, we are a give and get board. So we give funds to the foundation, and we solicit others to join us in contributing to the foundation for the benefits of students in the district. There are a lot of names on this list, again, that should be familiar to you. It's really a diverse group of business leaders, nonprofit, education, and government leaders, and we're very grateful for the commitment that our board members have. Next slide, please. We also wanted to talk a little bit about our partners in the Resource Development Council. We are here because of the 10 colleges, and we are grateful for the opportunity to work with these committed individuals on this list who, who join us in the effort to create opportunities and to raise funds for the benefit of the students. So really appreciate the opportunity to work with them, in addition to our work gathering dollars and administering the funds. And now, next slide, please. That really brings us to who we serve. We've heard from some amazing students tonight, but we also wanted to share a mission moment video with you to talk a little bit more about some of the scholarship recipients.
Hello, my name is Anna Lagarda, and I am a nursing student through the Maricopa Community Colleges. I'm making this video to thank the donor of this scholarship for supporting my education. I've been a nurse assistant for almost one year and fell in love with it, but as soon as I saw what nurses do for their patients, I knew I wanted to do that. It is something that inspires me every day that I'm at work, and I knew that I wanted to help people like that, not only physically, but emotionally be there for them. It's something that I want to dedicate my career on. So thank you very much. This donation is really going to help me for the next two years that I'm going to be in school, and I will be forever grateful for this support you guys are bringing me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We really wanted to share that with you, just to demonstrate this is why we're here, to provide that support so that students can go out and, as she said, continue on with emotional support for individuals in the community through her nursing degrees. So very grateful for the opportunity to raise funds for the benefit of the students. We now have our fearless leader, our wonderful foundation president and CEO, Brian, who's going to share some of our key accomplishments.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Julie. Governing Board President Marie Sullivan, governing board members, chancellor, C E C and guests. It's really about collaboration. It really is. And the, the growth and what we've been able to accomplish these last few years have been as a result of collaboration. I'm going to point out a couple of major accomplishments. On this slide, I'm going to talk about the auto donation program. That, we didn't figure that out. Gateway did. Gateway came to us and said, we, we think we've got a car we want donated, and why don't you do something about it, foundation? And so we did. We worked together with Gateway. We got our legal together, and we have a partner now. So please, give us your automobiles. We're going to compete with KJAS, I think, right? So, so, but that was innovation, and that's all about trust and the desire to bring revenue and support to our students. Next slide. I'll go into some of these on the other slides. So here's our revenue comparison. We'll always show this slide because it shows a level of growth. We've always been in that $5 to $6 million area for each year's revenue over the past 10 years. But what you're noticing is in '21, '22, we raised 13.7 million. 4.7 million of that was a legacy gift. So when you pull that out, you can begin to see what our base is. And that's what's really important to us, is what can we do year over year? So the next slide shows that comparison. So we look at gifts and we look at grants. So our gifts are up over a million prior year. So on what? We're, this is through April 30th. So we have a few more months to add to that number of 3.6 million. And then we have grants. Look at almost 100% increase in, in grant acquisition. And what that tells you is we've got the right products, we've got the right things happening in our colleges every day, and people are willing to invest in it. And no longer are we looking for transactional gifts, we want transformational gifts. A couple of examples of that is a recent gift from Piper, which was 2.25 million. We have to raise another 750 to match it. If we're going to get it, we'll do it. But that's to expand the LPN programs. So more and more, you're seeing investment in the actual material support of our colleges, as well as our students, leading us to a new level of our base, and that's 10.3 million. That's up 56% over last year. Next slide, please. And Elsa, thank you for always managing the slides. Highlights, be a student's hero. We set a goal of 200,000. We got to 187,000. Last year, we were at about 127,000. So we're up 47% over last year. What's important to note is our faculty and staff are really passionate supporters of everything that has to do with our students. 65% of that number came from faculty and staff, and we had 66 first-time donors. What we want to do is get the community passionate about this, this district-wide day of giving, and we've got work to do there. But that's where we'll really start raising more dollars, because it's, it's amazing what our faculty and staff do. Next slide. This just shows you the three-year comparison. We started this in 2021, and you can see the steady growth. Next year, if we keep at this, we'll be at a $300,000 level. That's, that's what my hope is. That's where we'll be. Or more, right? Next slide. So here are a couple of really important accomplishments, and that is scaling Maricopa Promise. I said collaboration earlier. Mesa came through with a pilot on a promise program that really works, and that we were able to move to the city of Phoenix and gain a $5 million contribution over the next several years to move a scaled promise program forward. What's important to note is 70% of those students going through a promise program are first generation. That's a game changer. And that's both at Mesa and Phoenix Promise Programs. And we looked at some data of the Phoenix Promise effort, and 28% of those students are in STEM courses. At Mesa, 21% are in health sciences. Really important careers for our communities develop. Our transformational gifts have been from Helios Education Foundation. That's to scale the Excel program to Estrella and Glendale. I already spoke about the Virginia G. Piper Grant, and then the auto program. And I see the chancellor, I have eight minutes, right? I'm almost there, right? So, so I don't know how you say that in French. Time? What? No. So, so the, the foundation really has done an amazing job with the district's support in bringing together a scholarship and a single application. We have more work to do there. We need the same button at the same place on every college's website. So the student does have to look for it. They now have one application. That's our next goal. So you can see the growth of scholarships. You can see the growth of those submitted, which tells you while we're all happy about the growth in revenue, it is insufficient to what is needed, to the size and scale of what this system has. We're happy about that, but we've got more work to do. Next slide. This gets to the emergency and basic needs, and Julie said 750,000. While, while that was correct at that moment in time, we're at 1,000,001 now with that and continuing to grow in terms of the dollars available for students' awards for basic needs. But we need more resources. So I'll, I'll stop with a little bit around opportunities and challenges. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. So we, we're launching a student success initiative this fall. It's not what we'll call it. We'll let smarter people figure that out. But it's really about to bring together all of these things that we're doing, which is not inconsequential. It's the promise efforts. How do we sustain those? It's the baccalaureate degrees. How do we get scholarship for students who are now moving through a four-year program? It's our workforce and industry partnerships, and we need to continue to close the student support gap. You heard Keisha Brock talk about that $3.5 million gap in student supports of what they need, and we need to figure out how to close that. Other pieces are, we need better alumni engagement. It needs improvement. We have our foundation's strategic plan, which our board is working on tomorrow. It's totally aligned to the district strategic plan, and we appreciate the ability to align to that. The other pieces are planned gifts and heroes of education. And shout out to governing board member Susan Bitter Smith, who is chairing that event, along with our chair, Stephanie Hertzberg. Thank you for that. It's, it's November 16th. It's going to be the funnest event around. It's not a rubber chicken circuit meal. It's at the Phoenix Art Museum. There's going to be food stations. We're going to have our students playing music at each station. And as you walk up, so I'm selling this to you. Come on, you gotta come. It could turn out...
You're on a roll. Go.
So, okay. So real quickly, you're going to hear the mariachis from Phoenix College playing as you come out of your car and move into the art museum. So we're really excited about that, and Kelly Butler's support on our fundraising committee for that event. You know, I'll end with, with this. We're doing good. We need to do better, and the money we're raising is still insufficient. And so we've got to figure out the right kind of framework for all of our colleges and the foundation to increase revenue for our, our students. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie.
Actually, if I could just jump in, you see, Brian is so wonderful. I missed a very important contributor to the foundation board, so I wanted to thank Dr. Peterson for, for being a very important person. Thank you.
Well, thank you all again for the opportunity to present, and we are welcome to take any questions, if you have any. We'd love to.
Go ahead, Ms. Bitter Smith.
I don't have a question, but I would be remiss if I didn't echo what Brian just said. If you would like a ticket to this, or a table to this wonderful event on the 16th of November, please talk to me, talk to Kelly, talk to Stephanie, talk to Julie, talk to Brian. We need to fill the museum, and it will be fun. So.
Fill all of the museum? We have, we have...
I mean, like all the floors?
We have access to all of the open floors for events. So there's plenty of space.
And not fill it with artifacts.
Correct.
Fill it with people. I, I did want to just say one more thing, and I apologize for this, President Sullivan. But what you heard today is really about the district, the colleges, the foundation board, our high-performing team, and our resource development officers working to make this possible. And so just wanted to say thank.
What I heard was a challenge, then. So we're going to help you fill that museum, is what I understand. Is that right, Ms. Bitter Smith?
There's no question about that.
There you go.
You're going to be hearing from me and probably Kelly and others, too.
Dr. Nirene, and any other comments, board members?
I have a question.
Yes.
What's your philanthropic revenue goal for the next fiscal year?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we, we set a goal of 7 million this year. We're at 10. We are, we are working with our resource development officers right, right now with that. So our goal, we should know in June. So that's our, our target. But I would suspect we're going to just keep pushing it, pushing it up.
Great. And then I would just offer myself and likely other board members, if we can be helpful as you're moving forward with any transformational gift request, if we can be brought in as closers, please let us know.
Thank you, governing board members. Smith, thank you for that.
Thank you for reporting. You've done an outstanding job. We really appreciate your leadership to this, and also to the governing board members who actively work with you on this effort. We are all focused on one interest, and that is our student's success. And any way that we can work together to achieve that, I think, is outstanding. And I know there are more ideas turning in that head and your board, so we look forward to hearing more of those. Thank you. Thank you. Good night. This is always an exciting meeting because there's so many people we want to hear from and celebrate. We have two emeritus awards this evening, and I'd like to invite Dr. Deb Laverne and Dr. Angeline Surba to the podium with their sponsor, Mesa Community College. Please.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the C E C and guests, my name is Chris Kronus, and it is a pleasure to, and with great enthusiasm, introduce two newly appointed members of, that garner the distinction of faculty emeritus. So with that, I report Dr. Deb Laverne.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the C E C and guests. My name is Dr. Deb Laverne, laverne in French. I graduated with my associate's degree from Mesa Community College a very long time ago, although one of my MCC professors predicted I would someday teach at MCC. I didn't believe him. I had no idea at that time that I would return years later after serving as a trainer in industry to the honor of teaching full-time at my alma mater. Through the almost 23 years at MCC, I was blessed to work with great colleagues in both the B I S and C I S departments, gaining mentors and friends. They were there to help, support, encourage, and pitch in for each other, and most importantly for our students. Throughout my tenure, I learned from my fellow professors and often from my students. Working with students, other faculty, both residential and adjunct, from our department, other MCC and sister colleges, college departments, and with district liaisons was all very valuable. Program and curriculum development, pathways, horsey's, scheduling, comms, C T E, Girls Get I T, A T F, Apple, Mighty, and Attending High School and Community Events was all part of our DNA. And of course, the main focus was and is our students. I was fortunate that innovation was encouraged, supported, and part of the culture within our C I S department at Mesa Community College. And it was supported by our dean, administration, and MCC's I T department. It kept us learning for life, and I was striving to try something new. Apple selecting MCC as one of the few colleges in the country to create and pilot the Everwink Code Project is a perfect example of the recognition for our tendency to start new programs and projects to help our students. Working closely with Maricopa Information Technology Institute, East Valley, and I am Mesa, that director was also a pleasure. Together, Mighty and C I S, we could quickly address needs of the community and small businesses, including developing a technopreneur experience to provide hands-on teamwork and internship experiences for our students. Our most recent example of innovation would be the development and accreditation of the Bachelor of Applied Science in Data Analytics and Programming, which was definitely a challenging but also rewarding experience, even with the extremely timeline that was short. This is one of the many programs that will continue to benefit our students and change... Excuse me. excuse me, and change lives. And that is what it's all about, isn't it? Our students, meeting their needs, promoting their success, and providing opportunities for their growth and learning. Someone asked me how many students I've taught while at MCC. With a quick calculation, I was surprised it was over 7,000, with a few of them repeats or in multiple classes. And I'm only one faculty member, so this is just a very small percentage of the student lives we touch as a professor, as a mentor, as a department, as a college, as a district. It's a little mind-boggling and definitely humbling. Throughout my career at MCC, I worked closely with Dr. Angeline Surber as friends and work partners. We retired together, and she is being honored tonight as well. We've had many discussions, and I believe she would agree with me. We are truly thankful for our time with Mesa and the district. We're also excited about our new adventures in retirement. We have already begun by completing a trip to Italy, a bucket list for both of us. Unfortunately, Dr. Surber is unable to be here tonight due to a family medical emergency. Diane Mesa is going to accept on behalf of Dr. Surber. We are both grateful and honored to receive the emeritus status from Mesa Community College and the district. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests. My name is Diane Mesa. I'm honored to speak here tonight about Dr. Angeline Surber. Although I've been an educator for many years, in 2019, I was brand-new to higher education. Dr. Surber was the MCC CIS department chair at that time. I learn from her every day. She is a true teacher, even with colleagues. I respect Dr. Surber in so many ways: her knowledge, her patience, her innovative thinking, her kindness, and her ethics. She is the reason the Maricopa IT Institute East Valley took off the way it did. Angie is fearless. She would say, "There's always a way, we just need to slow down and figure it out." And often, I had to be told to slow down, so that was a good thing. Angie taught at MCC for 24 years. Her talents include programming and digital media, but she had many other talents. She loved her students. Everything she did was above and beyond. I'm blessed that I was able to work with and learn from her before she retired. I'm honored to accept this on behalf of Dr. Angeline Surber and proud to call her my friend. Thank you.
Congratulations, and best of luck on your retirement. Enjoy your trip to Italy. Normally, I can speak Italian, but I can't get that far. But with that, enjoy it. It's a beautiful country if you've never been.
We just finished. We just got back.
You just got back?
Yeah.
Oh, very nice.
We were there, it was awesome.
Well, very nice.
I want to go back.
Yeah. It's always worth it. Well, thank you, and thank you for your contributions to many students. It's impressive, and thank you on behalf of Mr. Surber. Thank you. Thank you. I'm now going to move us to the chancellor report, but Dr. Gonzalez, before I introduce you, I wanted to briefly interject that I forgot to shout out a big thank you to Dr. Grunio and her team for the year's dedication of bringing us to a budget that we approved tonight. So thank you. You worked hard in not only working with the numbers, but educating all of us so that we could sit here in confidence and take the vote we did. And I know that it took a lot of hours around the clock, a lot of patience, and a lot of, I put this in quotes less someone misinterpreted, creativity in helping us understand what resources we need to move forward to impact positively our students and also to support those who work in our district. So again, one more round of applause from the board than everyone else. Thank you. So with that, I'm now going to move to you, Dr. Gonzalez, and I think you have some special people to introduce to us this evening.
That's correct. President Sullivan and members of the board, thank you. It's been a wonderful night so far of recognizing many people, including our students, faculty, and staff. I would like to invite up to the podium our chief of police, Chief Denlinger, and deputy police chief Brennan, who are going to be providing awards or giving awards to four well-deserving individuals who are members of our police force for a variety of reasons, to include valor, merit, and meritas service. So I'll let them take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you. President Sullivan, members of the board, chancellor, CEC, and guests, we're honored to actually showcase some of the extraordinary work by the dedicated men and women of your district police force. And I'm going to turn it over to our deputy chief, Jill Brennan.
Thank you.
All right. First, I'd like to call forward Police Officer David Lopez. Communication Supervisor Gretchen Eichner. Communication Specialist Tracy Patton. And Police Officer Robert Bearabon. Our first recipient for the Medal of Valor will be Police Officer David Lopez. On February 8th, 2023, at approximately 12:30 hours, Maricopa County Community Colleges' District Police Officer David Lopez, assigned to the Rio Salado College Campus, was on duty in his patrol vehicle at the intersection of Northern Avenue and 23rd Avenue when he heard the sound of a vehicle collision. Officer Lopez looked into his rearview mirror and saw smoke coming from the roadway indicating a vehicle crash had just occurred behind him. Officer Lopez acted quickly and turned his patrol vehicle around and observed a motor vehicle accident involving three vehicles. Officer Lopez observed two of the drivers outside their vehicles in the middle of the westbound lanes of Northern Avenue, which one of the drivers, sitting on the ground, leaning back against the vehicle. Out in abundance of caution, Officer Lopez positioned his patrol vehicle to block the westbound traffic lanes of Northern Avenue, and as an added measure to keep the driver safe, he further assisted by carrying both the disoriented drivers to a safe area off the roadway. At this time, Officer Lopez was informed by others who observed the accident that one of the drivers had fled the scene. Officer Lopez witnessed the location, witnessed the location of the third vehicle and now almost fully engulfed in flames, colliding with a traffic light pole and pinning a male pedestrian between the pole and the hood of the vehicle. Officer Lopez approached the car, discovered the pedestrian's body had been severed in half with the upper torso laying on top of the hood nearing the flames. Using handheld fire extinguisher, Officer Lopez made the valiant effort and attempted to extinguish the flames, although it provided no relief. Despite the obstacle of the vehicle fire, Officer Lopez continued to provide assistance and remove the upper torso from the hood of the vehicle to further preserve the identity and dignity of the individual. Moments later, rescue units from Phoenix Fire Department and Police Department fully arrived and fully extinguished the vehicle fire. These actions of Officer Lopez embody the spirit of the first responder and undeniably capture the true moments of what it means to rise to the challenge and respond with courage and integrity and honor. Next will be for Communication Supervisor Gretchen Eichner and Tracy Patton. On February 8th, 2023, while working in the Emergency Communications Center for the Maricopa Community Colleges Police Department, Police Communication Specialist Tracy Patton and Police Communication Supervisor Gretchen Eichner distinguished themselves in the performance of outstanding service to the Maricopa Community College Police Department. During their shift, Officer David Lopez advised he was on the scene of a multi-vehicle accident in 23rd Avenue in Northern, and advised one vehicle appeared to be on fire. Merely seconds later, Officer Lopez advised Specialist Patton the accident was a 963 Hendry, meaning a fatal hit-and-run. Specialist Patton remained calm and professional on the radio while acknowledging Officer Lopez updating the CAD call for service she had generated, and immediately began dispatching additional college police personnel to assist in the scene. Without hesitation, Supervisor Eichner simultaneously notified both the Phoenix Police and Phoenix Fire Departments via the PSAP radio channel, dispatching emergency medical assistance and additional police units to assist Officer Lopez. Updated notes in the CAD call as needed and began making appropriate command notifications. Her decision to use the PSAP radio channel instead of the phone prevented minutes of delay in emergency medical and fire assistance. Faced with instantaneous stress and fear for the safety of Officer Lopez and those involved in the accident, Specialist Patton and Supervisor Eichner exhibited absolute professionalism, outstanding teamwork, and performed their duties in exemplary fashion. Their actions demonstrate their commitment to our department and the communities we serve and the public safety emergency communications profession. The last commendation we have tonight is for meritorious service. What's this? Sorry. Before we get started, I want to say, the right up here we have is just a fraction of what Officer Robert Bearaban does every day. An outstanding police officer. I first met Bob 32 years ago when he came on the Phoenix Police Department as a young rookie. I've watched him develop into probably one of the greatest police officers I've ever worked with. We are very happy to have him with our department. On July of 2020, in July of 2021, Officer Bearaban began tracking catalytic converter theft incidents at MCCD properties. With great intensity, Officer Bearaban studied each report, looking for any information that would lead to the identity of these suspects. The majority of these cases involved several different vehicles, various suspect descriptions, and random data, dates, and times these crimes would occur. Officer Bearaban finally found the particular vehicle that was used in a few of these thefts. These thefts occurred between December of 2021 and December of 2022. Officer Bearaban worked tirelessly for over a year investigating, developing leads, and tracking these events. During the investigation, Officer Bearaban worked with several other agencies in the sharing of intelligence and attempting several different investigative techniques. Officer Bearaban committed his own time to this investigation while developing and then tracking suspects. His endless pursuit of this case resulted in the February 2023 arrest of a group of suspects responsible for these thefts. Officer Bearaban is an outstanding employee and asset to the MCCD PD. He is an extremely dedicated investigator who leaves no stone unturned because of Officer Bearaban. Because Officer Bearaban is such a tenacious investigator, he was chosen to be part of the Elite Criminal Apprehension Team, CAT Team for short, for the MCCD PD. Officer Bearaban is committed in apprehending criminals who prey on the MCCD community as well as preventing crimes before they occur. Officer Bearaban routine displays a professional and positive image that is keeping with the highest standards and values of the Maricopa County Community Colleges Police Department, Officer Robert Bearaban. Thank you for having us tonight. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Let's give everyone a round of applause again. There are many evenings, you know, when we're sitting here at this end, and what we notice is how many of the law enforcement, police department members are in the back of the room. And I know what they're doing is they're walking the campus, they're walking up and down the hall, they're coming around the back to ensure regardless of any unforeseen or inappropriate conduct, we will be protected and safe. And I know that they do that every single day, 24 hours a day, on all of our campuses. So not just showing valor on our campus, but outside, representing the district is really outstanding, and we are very pleased and honored that we could follow up the National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, Dr. Gonzalez, with this recognition. So thank you for that, and thank you again, chief, and all of the officers that are with us this evening, and your families. Thank you, and your support. So Dr. Gonzalez, tough act to follow, but good luck.
President Sullivan, that's going to conclude my update, but I will share a really quick funny story in a way in that somebody approached me up at dinner before this meeting and said, "Is everything okay?" And I said, "Yes, why?" He said, "There's a lot of police officers downstairs." And I said, "Well, some of them are receiving awards tonight, and so it's a good thing." So thank you to our men and women in uniform and to our communication specialists for ensuring that we are as safe as we can be, and we appreciate your good work and leadership. Thank you. That concludes my update, President Sullivan.
Thank you. You know, Dr. Gonzalez, what I forgot? I forgot to bring my lightsaber. Did you bring your lightsaber?
I did not bring my lightsaber, President Sullivan.
Oh, it's... Dr. Gonzalez and I attended a Star Wars moment day. May the fourth be with you. Event at Rio Salado. And we immediately received lightsabers to acknowledge the day, since neither one of us were in costume. He was handed his, I was handed mine, and without even thinking twice or looking at each other, we started to engage in a lightsaber battle. I don't know what, I don't know what that says about us, Dr. Gonzalez, but darn, we'll bring them next time.
I was defending myself. One more thing, President Sullivan, if I may. I believe we all owe you a belated birthday wish, right?
Well, depends how belated you want to be.
I believe it was just four or five days ago.
Yes, it was.
So a happy belated birthday to Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I won't say how old I was, other than my daughter reminded me. She goes, "Mom, you're not 20 anymore." So, okay, you're right, I'm not. So moving on, and thank you for all the celebrations and acknowledgements this evening, everyone. We're going to move into the business portion of our meeting, but we're going to start with citizens interim, which we know is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. We're going to stay in compliance with open meeting laws, and so the governing board will neither discuss nor take action on any issue raised this evening. I have one card for requesting to speak. It's from Mrs. Luan Pleasant. And Mrs. Pleasant, you're welcome to come to the podium. And as a reminder again, civil discourse and good manners as well as three minutes. So please.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Chancellor Gonzalez, governing board members, family and friends and those listening. Of course, I'm always pleasant because that's my name. So I'm just reiterating my hope and desire that the Maricopa Community Colleges remains honest and transparent in all of their dealings. I know that there's a lot going on in the district that require transparency, and thank you so much, Mr. Tom Nurey. You are my district representative, and thank you for fighting on behalf of these tuition increases and the reduction in scholarships that are going to be facing our community. I'd also like to let you know that we've partnered with our new district eight representative, Dr. Keisha Washington. She's our new district eight representative, and we're also going to be partnering with the National Action Network under the leadership of Dr. Bridget Tarkington, under the guidance of Reverend Al Sharpton. And I'm so sorry that we were not aware of these changes until late regarding the governing board's values. We're striking the value of the community of colleges, working collectively and responsibility to meet the lifelong learning, the lifelong learning of our diverse community. We're striking our institutional values that we're no longer committed to the community, that we no longer value our students or our employees. We're striking the honesty, integrity of our dealings. We're striking the inclusiveness. We're striking the innovation. We're striking the learning environment, the responsibility stewardship. I'm thinking, how did all this happen? And it's going into effect today. So we have to do a better job as a community to partner with the district to find out what's really going on and how it's affecting the changes that will affect us in our community. So, Dr. Nurey, we'll be contacting you in the near future, hopefully, to see how we can perhaps partner, because, you know, if you don't know, you won't know how to respond. So at this time, I'm going to ask that our listening community know that we do have an opportunity to engage with our governing board members on all respects, because we don't do anything in secret. We've got to do everything. We've got to do everything transparent and truthful and honest. And Dr. Sar, thank you for your presence here, because right now I'm feeling our good friend, Dr. ZT Wright, with me right now. Some of you may know him, some of you may not know him, but he was a true, honest and fair person, and he's the reason that I'm still diligently standing here after four years. I'm so sorry I wasn't here at the last meeting. I was sick. Thank you so much, Dr. Falkenberg, for reaching out to me and trying to help me address the issues that I've been dealing with for these last four years. And I was going to say, it'd be wonderful, perhaps, if you guys could get that three-minute clock back up so that a person kind of gauges their time, because I know that I'm kind of long-winded in my communications, and that is not my intent. My intent is to be precise and to the point and clear and understood. And also, Dr. Marcelo, tafu dali ni pe chakula. Okay, all right. And that's all I have to say. And that means, please, could I have some food in Swahili? All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Pleasant. We're now going to move to consideration of the consent agenda. All under items under this section are consent matters unless they are removed from the consent agenda at this time. Do any board members or the chancellor wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
President Sullivan?
Yes.
I don't wish to remove anything. I'm going to scare you. I just wanted to point out item number 13, which is now an approval on the consent agenda for the Bachelor of Science in Nursing Program to be offered a gateway. Again, more progress on workforce training, workforce jobs, and response to the need of our citizens.
Thank you.
With that, I would actually make a motion to approve the consent agenda if that is in order.
That is in order unless there's any other comment for removal of any item. There is none, so I'll accept your comment as a motion. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you. So there's a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Burnett, were you part of the ayes?
I was.
Thank you. Any opposed? There being none, the consent agenda passes as presented. We're now moving to non-consent action items, and that is a second read and adoption of the governing board policy changes to 1.0 outcomes, 1.0 global and broadest outcome, 1.1 university transfer education and general education, 1.2 workforce and economic development, 1.3 developmental education, 1.4 community development, and civic and global engagement, and 4.1 governing values. Are there any questions? Being none, is there a motion to adopt those amendments to governing board policies as presented? Dr. Thor, if you'd like to make the motion?
So much.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Davis Smith. Thank you. Any for the discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor vote by saying aye, including our student trustee.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, the vote, the motion passes on a unanimous vote. We'll now move to approval to implement the fiscal year 24 salary increases presented in the district's multi-year strategic compensation plan as approved and adopted by the governing board through Board Policy 2.7 Staff Compensation and Benefits. Is there a motion to approve the said fiscal year 24 salary increases as noted?
I move that we approve the salary increases as presented?
In the plan.
In the plan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Nureny. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor, including our student trustee, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, so those are approved. We're now moving to a first read and information items. Is there any comment on item one, employment and separations from March 18, 23 through April 14, 23? Moving on to first read of governing board policy changes to 3.2 accountability of the chancellor and 3.4 monitoring the chancellor's performance. Are there any questions on that? Being none, we'll move to item three, the Arizona Auditor General Presentation of Maricopa County Community College District's Fiscal Year 21, 22 Audit Reports and Results Pursued to Statute 15-1473F. And Ms. Grineau, I know that you're anchoring this discussion for us this evening, and you have some presenters you'd like to introduce. Could you give some brief background on this before we move on to you introducing them, please?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, President Sullivan, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the governing board, members of the CEC, colleagues and guests. I'm Kim Grineau, and I serve as the Vice Chancellor for Business Services for the system. So Maricopa's financial statements and federal funds are audited annually as required by statute, and they are audited by the Auditor General's Office. A new law went into effect a couple of, or was affected a couple of years ago. Last year was the first year with which we started this process where by law now the auditors are required to present the audits and related outcomes of the audits to the district's governing board. And so the Auditor General's Office representatives are here with us today, and I'm happy to introduce Ms. Lindsay Perry, who's the auditor general, and Ms. Taryn Stengel, who's the financial audit manager who oversaw our audit, and they will present to you the audits for fiscal year 2022.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez. I am Lindsay Perry, the auditor general. Thank you for inviting my office and dedicating time at your meeting, your regular meeting tonight, to hear the district's fiscal year 22 audit results. So joining me from my office is Taryn Stengel. As Ms. Grineau said, she oversaw the district's audits, and there are a number of them, which we'll be going through tonight. Before we discuss the district's audit results, I always think it's helpful to kind of give you some perspective about the office. I know some of you are very familiar with the office, but we are a legislative agency made up of nonpartisan staff. We report directly to the legislature, all 90 members, but in particular, we are overseen by a joint legislative audit committee. So that's five members from the House, five members from the Senate, who set our audit schedules and also allow us to do all of the county community college districts and universities' audits. We obviously are an independent source of impartial information to the legislature, and we provide specific recommendations to improve the operations and programs of state and local governments like the district. And we also assess compliance with various state, local, and federal laws and requirements. In addition, you may have heard the sort of term audit thrown around in the last few years, but I wanted to let you know that we follow auditing standards. These are standards that are created by the United States Comptroller, and they prescribe different requirements for things like audit reports, professional qualifications for auditors, auditor ethics, independence, objectivity, professional judgment, audit evidence, and an audit organization's quality control. So all auditors of federal, state, and local governments use these same standards to perform audits and produce reports. Your reports are produced under auditing standards. Tonight, we will be discussing, if we could advance to the next slide, please, we will be discussing our audit work for three required annual reports. The first report is the district's annual comprehensive financial report. This presents the district's annual financial statements and our opinion as to whether the district's financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects and conformity with United States generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP, as we like to call them, you know, acronyms. Auditors love acronyms. It's wonderful to report that for fiscal year 22, we reported an unmodified or clean opinion, which means that the district's financial statements are reliable. We sent each of you links to this report in an email dated January 30 of 2023 of this year. The second report is our report on internal control and on compliance, is where we report any findings and recommendations resulting from our audit of the district's financial statements. Although we found that the district's financial statements are reliable, we are also required to report findings on items like deficiencies in internal control, fraud or abuse, and noncompliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and agreements that we identify as part of our financial audits. We reported two financial statement findings, which Taryn will discuss a little bit later. We issued this report along with the single audit report for the district, which is a federal report, and sent you an email, I believe it was last week. Finally, the third report is that federal single audit report. It includes our assessment of the district's compliance with the major federal program requirements. Over each federal program, we are required to audit. We audited five programs in fiscal year 22. It also includes the district's schedule of annual federal expenditures for the year and our opinion on it. We reported a qualified opinion on the district's Student Financial Assistance Cluster, or SFA, and the Higher Education Institutional Aid Program. So what that means is that the district did not comply with certain federal requirements, certain key federal requirements, such as reporting requirements, special tests and provisions, and that compliance is necessary for a clean or unmodified opinion. For all other major federal programs we audited, so the other three, we included an unmodified or a clean opinion on those federal programs. So the single audit report is where you can find our qualified and unmodified opinions and the resulting six findings we found during our federal compliance audit. Okay, finally, we know that there's a lot in these reports, very lengthy. So we've provided a two-page highlights document. It sort of breaks down the complexities of the district's reports in a nice two-page summary. When we issued our final report, you also received a copy of that. We also have a hard copy too today if you would like that in a paper form. The highlights include the district's largest primary revenue sources and how the district used those monies over the last 10 years. So it gives you a nice sort of look at a 10-year look for the district. It also includes a brief information about our key findings and recommendations, and also contains links to current prior year audit reports and other user guides that may be helpful to understanding the complex information presented in those reports. So in the interest of time, I know Taryn was going to walk through some of those trends and analysis on the financial side, but I know it's late. So if it's okay with the board, we're going to skip through those slides and get right to the audit results of our findings and recommendations. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, and Dr. Gonzalez. My name is Taryn Stengel. As Auditor General Perry indicated, I was the audit manager on the audit, and I will walk through the audit findings. If you could please skip to, I think it's slides six or seven? Seven. There we go. Thank you. As previously noted, the report on internal controls and noncompliance is where you will find our financial statement findings, along with the district's responses to them. For the district, we reported two financial statement findings, one over payroll controls and another over vendor change controls. It is also important to note that the district corrected a prior year finding over IT access controls that we had reported for several years. The first financial statement finding identified deficiencies in the district's review and approval over employee timesheets. The district reported to us that during fiscal year 2022, supervisors had not reviewed or approved 6,856 timesheets totaling $4.4 million in wages. We found that five of the 60 timesheets we specifically tested were never reviewed or approved by the employee supervisor. This occurred because supervisors did not follow the district's written procedures requiring employee timesheets to be reviewed and approved either before payroll is processed or within three business days after receiving an email notification that employees' timesheets need to be approved. Because of similar prior year deficiencies, the district overpaid an employee for hours they did not work or leave, or work or leave that they did not earn during fiscal years 2017 through 2019. Specifically, the district's internal audit performed at the request of Glendale Community College that a former employee intentionally misreported time worked and had been overpaid $13,308 by the district during fiscal years 2017 through 2019. The employee supervisor did not properly review and approve timesheets. Therefore, the unapproved timesheets, the district continues to be exposed to an increased risk of fraud and misuse of public monies because it could not prevent or detect and correct employees intentionally or unintentionally misreporting their time worked. We recommend that the district enforce its written procedures requiring supervisors to review and approve the timesheets either beforehand or within the three business days after timesheets. Monitor and ensure each college's human resources department verifies that supervisors are performing post-payroll reviews and correcting any errors that are noted. Develop procedures to periodically compile and submit a listing of remaining unimproved timesheets to each college and follow up with the supervisors to approve them. The district reported that it did concur with the finding and plans to implement and correct the deficiencies by December 2023. The next slide, please. For the second financial statement finding, the district's accounts payable department did not follow its vendor payment process. Specifically, the department changed a vendor bank account routing information in the system and then paid $28,612 to a fraudulent bank account based solely on a request received by an email. This occurred because the department did not follow the district's written verification procedures when updating bank account information. We recommend that the district's accounts payable department follow written procedures that require employees to directly contact the vendor using existing contact information within the district system to verify the appropriateness of vendor changes before making any changes. Provide additional training on written procedures to include proper verification and how to handle emails requesting changes to the bank information. The district reported it concurred with the finding and plans to implement and correct all deficiencies by June 2023. Next slide, please. Now I will go over with you the six federal compliance findings that we reported in the single audit report. I would like to note that for the four federal findings we reported in fiscal year 2021 regarding the student financial assistance cluster, or oftentimes referred to as SFA, and the Higher Education Institutional Aid Program, the district partially or fully corrected three of the findings, and one SFA finding had not been corrected. For the SFA cluster, we reported three federal compliance findings this fiscal year. The district's 10 colleges each administer their own student financial aid office and disperse SFA funds to students. The district's office is responsible for monitoring the college's SFA offices' adherence to district-wide policies and procedures and to ensure their compliance with requirements for the student financial assistance program, such as the Pell and Direct Loans, which are the two largest programs within the SFA cluster comprising of over 95% of the total program expenditures in fiscal year 2022. Specifically, we reported the following noncompliance with the SFA cluster. Five of the 10 colleges did not accurately and/or timely report enrollment student changes, for example, changing from a full-time student to a part-time student to the National Student Loan Data System. Specifically, we noted this issue for 12 of the 40 students we tested that received the Pell Grant or the Direct Loan Program. We also reported similar findings over enrollment reporting since 2014. Eight of the 10 colleges did not perform monthly reconciliations over the Direct Loan Program to student dispersment records, to the information reported in the Common Origination and Dispersment System. Specifically, we noted that the SFA offices did not complete 10 of the 20 monthly reconciliations and/or did not resolve and investigate discrepancies found for another three monthly reconciliations. Two of its 10 colleges did not disperse SFA credit balances within 14 days directly to students or parents for four of the 50 students we tested. Because of the findings reported, as Lindsay mentioned, that we reported a qualified opinion over the SFA cluster. We recommend that district monitor and ensure its college's student SFA offices to accurately report all student enrollment changes within 60 days for both the Pell and Direct Loan Programs to the National Student Loan Data System. Complete monthly reconciliations of its Direct Loan Programs to the U.S. Department of Education's Common Origination Dispersment System, and investigate and resolve all differences. And finally, to complete all reviews of student accounts and disperse SFA credit balances within 14 days. The district did agree with the finding and plans to implement recommendations by December 2023. On the next slide, please. For the fourth federal compliance finding, identified deficiencies over the Higher Education Institutional Aid Program. This program- This program is administered and awarded separately to the colleges. Since 2005, six of the 10 colleges have been awarded monies to establish endowments to be used for scholarships. The district had 10 endowments that were funded by the program, along with the matching dollars that are now on deposit with the foundation. These endowments are held and invested by the foundation. We found that the district did not submit three of its endowment annual reports to the U.S. Department of Education. And for four of the endowment reports that we tested, we were unable to trace information to supporting documentation. Further, in interviewing, further in reviewing the reports, we found that the district's office and colleges were not aware of each of the endowment's investment performance within the foundation or whether the foundation's investment policies met federal regulations. Because of this finding, the opinion on the federal program was qualified. We recommend that the district office should develop and implement written policies and procedures to update its endowment contracts with its foundation to comply with federal regulations. Designate an employee to monitor the endowments within the foundation to ensure the endowments are properly accounted for, spent, and invested in accordance with federal regulations. And require each college to submit an endowment annual report to the U.S. Department of Education after the reports have been reviewed and approved for accuracy. The district reported it plans to correct these deficiencies by December 31, 2023. Next slide, please. For the fifth federal compliance finding identified deficiencies over the Trio Cluster. This program provides academic services to low-income first-generation students. We found that Gateway Community College and South Mountain Community College Trio Offices did not properly review and approve 21 of 24 students' eligibility tested for the Trio upward pound program. In addition, at Gateway Community College, we, they could not provide records for $14,678 in stipends awarded to its students. We recommend that the district should require independent review of all approval of student eligibility determinations by an independent and knowledgeable employee. Maintain records supporting the stipends awarded to students and train employees responsible for administering the Trio Program on district-wide policies and procedures. The district reports that it plans to correct these deficiencies by December 31, 2023. And our final finding identified that the district's single audit report was issued 47 days past the federal audit clearinghouse deadline of March 31, 2023. According to district, it was delayed in providing us with the required information to complete the federal compliance audit by March 31, 2023 deadline because of vacancies, turnover, and lack of cooperation to obtain complete populations, reports, and documentations from the college's SFA offices and grants management personnel for the Trio Cluster and the Higher Education Institutional Aid Programs. To crack the finding, the district should allocate sufficient resources and improve its coordination with all responsible offices at the district office and colleges to obtain the required information and provide to auditors by agreed-upon dates so it can submit its single audit report on time in the future. The district reported that it anticipates fully correcting this deficiency by March 31, 2024. This completes our presentation of the district's fiscal year 2022 audit reports, including the report findings and recommendations. Are there any questions that I can answer for you concerning the district's audits?
Thank you for your report this evening, Ms. Gruneau. Maybe both of you can team up if we have any questions here. Board members, I know that this may generate a lot of conversation. If we find that gets very deep, then I think what we might want to do is a work session on this issue. But in the meantime, let's see if there are any top-of-mind questions where our auditors and Ms. Gruneau this evening. And I'll just go down the row here. I'll start with you, Mr. Burnett.
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Questions.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Ms. Gruneau, do you think that we have enough staff hired now to take care of some of this, some of these findings?
President Sullivan, Ms. Davis, we still have some gaps in grants accounting in particular, where we have been trying to recruit for accountants and have not been successfully able to do so. However, for this particular finding on the delay, some of it is about coordinated efforts and bringing more people up to speed on what the actual audit process is. The auditors were required to select more programs than normal to do testing. So we had some folks who have never been through an audit before. So we are working through different strategies on how to bring people up to speed a little bit more quickly. The problem we end up with is the coordination of the audit is part of many duties that my team supports. So we're going to work through those challenges and make sure that we get timely responses and timely coordinated efforts. Part of what we talked about is we may need to escalate lack of responses a little bit more quickly than maybe we were before, just to try to stay on top of things. So this is definitely an issue that we do not expect to occur again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bitter Smith?
No, Ms. Gruneau just responded to the obvious question, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
No questions at this time.
Dr. Narimi? Dr. Thor?
I don't have any questions, but I would request that the board receive a report periodically on what progress we are making on resolving the issues that have now been brought to our attention.
Happy to do so, Dr. Thor. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, to the auditors, thank you very much for being with us this evening. Certainly, anytime that there are any findings, they do raise concerns. And I know, having spoken with Ms. Gruneau earlier as a result of seeing the emails that you sent, she was very concerned and certainly on top of all of the concerns. And I believe, Ms. Gruneau, in addition to what you have said, you had, to Ms. Davis, you have some other ideas and thinkings how we can ensure that this doesn't happen again. Could you offer one other in addition to what you heard around your mention of staff and the training and the coordination? Is there anything else top of mind that comes to you around resource allocation? A way that we as a board can be partners with you in ensuring this doesn't happen again? Do we need to do our homework better? I mean, what is it that you might have another thought on?
Mrs. Sullivan, thank you for the question. I'm trying to think. I'm like, it's the end of a very long day. So I'm trying to think of what else I have on the top of my head right now. No, I, I think that the board is always very supportive of the financial functions of our institution. This, I think, is maybe just a reminder of the audit function that sometimes gets pushed to the side as we're trying to close things out and trying to move into the next phase of things. So last year's single audit didn't get issued until June. So we immediately went from that single audit into the financial statement work and the financial statement audit, which got issued about a month late in January, and then immediately went to the single audit. And now here we are at the end of May, just having issued the single audit. And now we're going to start the financial audit again. So years ago, we had year-round auditors. We were really happy to not have year-round auditors. And we're back in a situation where we have that. And a lot of that is simply due to the pandemic and issues related to the pandemic and work that was happening then. All of the federal funding we received, while great and appreciated, and we're wrapping that up, that becomes a huge part of the audit. All of the different activities that had to take place because of changes in financial aid and changes of methods of delivery just made things very challenging, and the last two years have been very challenging. And so I think we're coming out of that. I will share that, you know, there was a letter issued earlier this year about the delay. And then there was a finding related to the delay. We had a delay last year. We didn't get a finding for it. So I'll be honest, this was a little bit of a surprise to me. Not necessarily the delay, but the finding related to it. Again, that's all fine. We'll redouble our efforts and we'll make sure that we stay on top of communication and working better with the program areas that are getting audited in order to make sure we've got timely responses. And that includes not only the other programs that are audited, but also the financial aid areas that are audited as well. And so interim Provost Bettina Seles and I are working also with our teams on how do we ensure a smoother financial aid part of the audit, which you can imagine is quite large for a system our size. So it's, it's very complicated. We have 10 colleges that do it. There's a lot of manual processing that occurs. In those kinds of situations, we're going to have errors. We just can't have errors that are big enough to rise to a finding. So we just need to buckle down and come together as a system and come to some agreements on how we're going to do business and move forward with that. It's kind of the best answer I've got right now.
It's pretty thorough. Thank you. The issue of accountability is certainly important to all of us here. And the idea of being coordinated in our efforts to ensure that everyone is working towards the same end, I think is something we would constantly want to be aware of. And I know, Dr. Gonzalez, we've expressed that to you. And I would support Dr. Thor's position that it would be helpful to get progress reports as we move along so that we can see how we're meeting the deadlines that we've stated we will meet and move forward from there. So we'll look forward to hearing from you again in that regard. And I guess my question to the auditor general and also the auditor is, do you find working with this district to be in a positive manner? Because I, we know how, maybe that's a touching question to ask, and we're all grinning. So we know that there's a positive answer at the end of that question. But I think we'd like to hear it out loud as a board.
President Sullivan, board members, appreciate the question. I don't know that anybody likes auditors, right, likes being audited. And certainly, the district is sort of an continual audit, as Ms. Gruneau stated. We have always had a longstanding professional working relationship with Ms. Gruneau, her team, and then the others that have come before her. I actually started in the auditor general's office, and this was my first audit. So it's sort of like a full circle. I've always appreciated this audit and the mission, of course, of the district, and just the magnitude of what you do. So certainly, we appreciate our working professional collaborative relationship with the team. I think I'd like to add a little bit of context as to the audit delay. When the federal government rolled out all of these monies, generally, the single audit deadline, so that March 31 deadline, is set in stone. For two years, I believe, they extended that deadline by six months. So they moved it to September. Last year, it was September, and the district met that deadline for the single audit report. Now they've moved it back for fiscal year 22 to March 31. It's a heavy lift. And I will tell you that the district is like other districts and counties and is struggling to meet that deadline. Certainly, we thought that the federal government may extend it for this year, maybe do three months. But they're trying to get everybody back into that March 31 deadline. So I think that there's a lot of growing pains to get back there. There might be sort of a period this year where the federal government doesn't look as harshly on those that don't meet that deadline as they would maybe in the next year. So I think it's really important we get the district back on track to meeting those deadlines so it doesn't put the district at risk for various things. Additional reporting, more audits, potential monies being withheld, or federal programs just not being approved. And so that would be the goal. And you certainly have my, my agreement to dedicate our resources. You know, certainly, we are down resources, and that's why we have to pull audit teams off when deadlines aren't necessarily met. But you have my agreement to move the district forward to meet that March 31. We're not far. I mean, May is when we issued, June was last year. We had two additional federal programs or one this year? One additional federal program. So that's an immense amount of work, not only for my office, but also Ms. Gruneau's team. So certainly, I think that there's high hopes for next year. And having those routine updates, certainly, if that's something that you would like my office to be a part of, I'm happy to join.
Thank you. Well, once again, thank you this evening. Thank you, Ms. Gruneau. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comment on this?
I just want to thank the auditors for their support and work here and also for Kim's team in acknowledging that, in addition to the daily work that they're all assigned to do, that this is on top of that, and it's extremely important work. But it makes for complex and long days and evenings and weekends for these folks. So acknowledging that. And then the thing that comes to mind for me, especially when I hear that the number of supervisors that, for example, in the one finding is that we need to up our game in training. And along with training, then we can begin to hold accountability around an expectation because I think that's critically important. And with the implementation of performance reviews here in the next year, that might provide us an opportunity to ensure that there's regular attention to accountability around expectations.
Thank you. Board members, for the good of the order, anything else? Being done, thank you again for sticking with us this evening. We know it was long. Appreciate your time. Ms. Gruneau, as always, thank you for everything that you're doing. Thank you. So we only have one other item here, and that is, are there any questions or comments from board members on the budget analysis report fund for the 10-months ending for 3023? Being done, last piece. Dr., Mr. Burnett, do you have anything to report? Is your community report?
No, nothing to report at this time, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I just wanted to say thank you for including me CGCC at the graduation ceremony and congratulations again to all graduates this season.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Ms. Butler and I have a lot to report because we've been outdoing a lot. In the last month, we toured Rio Salado. We had a great lunch. We went to visit KJAS. We toured South Mountain and saw the wind tunnel and the construction trades and a lot of other cool stuff. We visited Gateway and saw the Health Sciences Building and walked into the high school there, which was fun. And then I attended the adjunct faculty awards, which were amazing. So that was fun with Mr. Burnett. You didn't report that.
I knew you would.
Oh, okay. And then I got the opportunity to attend the veterans convocation. Thank you so much, Kel. I hope I get invited back because that was a lot of fun. And finally, the Australia Mountain commencement ceremony, which was absolutely wonderful. And I hope next time to do even more of those because it was, it was a great experience. Thank you very much for inviting me. And that's, and that's all that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith.
Thank you, President Sullivan. First of all, I want to add my welcomes to former board member and ACCT life member, Dr. Sar. Thank you for being here and being, I think, one of our rare life members of ACCT. I also want to thank our crack community and PR team for the Vision t-shirts. They've been hearing this ad nauseam from me, so thank you for producing those. And then a couple of events that I did do this month. Earlier in the month, I was privileged to be part of a press event with Mayor Kate Gallego and the Chairman of the Federal Communications Commission, focusing on affordable connectivity programs offered federally. The nexus there was the fact that Phoenix College, in partnership with Setia Phoenix, is the hub of activity and connectivity. And by a very happy coincidence, so is the cable broadband industry, which I know just a little bit about. So that was, that was fun. Then I was privileged to be part of the Paradise Valley Community College's nursing penning ceremony, which is always, always gratifying. All but one, and that, and the graduates had jobs already lined up. The one that didn't had a plan. So it was, that was pretty impressive to watch that. And then I appreciated being included with Dr. Lashinsky and his team at this Glasgow Community College graduation at Salt River Fields with fireworks. Great turnout, great response. And then the following night, Dr. Hunter included me in the Paradise Valley Community College graduation ceremonies with fireworks. Again, a little different fireworks, but same location, but very different ceremonies because they're very unique campuses. And as you said, that, that makes the job worthwhile every year for being a volunteer board member because the excitement and the success stories and the look of anticipation can't be repeated. So thank you for allowing me to be part of this.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Ms. Butler?
Thank you very much. So Ms. Davis and I finally concluded our tour of all 10 campuses. We split it up tonight so that we would make it as quick as possible. So I will finish the list. It was six this month. Phoenix College, Dr. Britton, her team, toured, took us to their parallel program. We saw their recording studio, which is incredibly impressive. Their science building, and we ended by viewing their nursing program and seeing students who were preparing for finals. They were working together collaboratively. It was a great event. Then we toured Mason Community College. Dr. Robinson showed, we went through their art gallery, their multimedia center. They were creating student projects. It was a really wonderful tour. And then finally, Chandler Gilbert, thanks to Dr. Peterson and his staff. We, that campus blew my mind. Just, I mean, it's like the airport, the aircraft maintenance, the artificial intelligence, the drones, the... the drones, and the partnerships that they've created and were able to talk about with industry and corporations in the, in the community was just so impressive. In addition, Donna and I visited the foundation offices, met with Brian Spicker and his team. We also talked about the Heroes of Education event, November 16th. You'll keep us, hearing us talk about that. We're working on sponsorships now, and we look to have individual tickets available probably in August. So be on the lookout. And then I was able to attend the Foster Youth Convocation at Phoenix College that was so moving, and I want to thank Dr. Britt. And really, what was so moving, and I'm sorry to be long-winded, but, man, the students who were there didn't necessarily have much family in the audience, but what was really encouraging and then just heartening to see were all the faculty and staff that were there in attendance, because they cared so much about the students, and it was wonderful and moving, and we were all crying. Thank you very much, Dr. Britt. And then I was able to, privileged to attend the Glendale Community College commencement, which I think is Dr. Laura's last commencement, if we let him actually retire. It was really moving and appreciated that chance to be there. So sorry to be so long-winded. We have now completed all 10 of our campus tours, and it's been wonderful to really get to see every campus in action. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Norene.
Thank you. May is always a busy month. First, I want to congratulate South Mountain Community College for making their women's softball team making it to the World Series. They won their first game today. So yeah, I was, I was busy attending lots of convocations and graduations. I attended the Native, the American Indian Convocation at Phoenix College, the Hispanic Convocations Downtown, and the African-American Convocations, as well as the Asian and Pacific Islanders Convocations. Then I was honored to speak at both Gateway and South Mountain's graduation, right at, right after each other. And then I was able to speak at, at the Phoenix College graduation. So that was, that was a lot of fun. I also attended NATO's Celebration of Latino Leadership at their national conference they had here in Phoenix. And I attended the Task Force for Course Feeds kickoff meeting. So that was, that was good. And with all of that and all the hectic schedule we had on, in May, I also participated in Gateway's Massage Therapy Clinic. It was much needed, and there's, there are still spaces.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. What does that mean?
What's that?
What does that mean?
That means they give you a massage.
You got a massage?
Yes. And there's still spaces available, so you can.
I knew that was what, I was just.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah.
Just so, yeah.
It was like, la, 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 la. That helped make my, end of my, May nice. That concludes my report.
Okay. Dr. Thor?
Well, I was also busy in May, but I think Dr. Norene gets the award this year for the most events participated in. May 3rd, I represented the board at the LGBTQ+ Convocation at Phoenix College. And this was a particularly memorable occasion for me, as it was the first time in my 40-plus year career that I was introduced by a drag queen. And she was wonderful. I have to admit, I looked out and saw a lot of people taking photos of this particular event. May 4th, I represented the board at the Asian Pacific Islander Convocation at Rio. May 6th, I again represented the board at the Second Annual Ability Maricopa Convocation that was also held here at Rio. On May 9th, I joined Dr. Gonzalez at the Rio Solado College commencement ceremony at Arizona Financial Theater. And it's notable that dual enrollment students graduated with a total of 307 associate degrees and certificates, which they received before getting their high school diplomas. And finally, I would like to congratulate our public radio station, KJZZ. According to the latest Nielsen ratings, KJZZ is the number-one station in Phoenix for listenership, not just news, but overall listenership. And that's, I think, very, very commendable. That concludes my report.
Thank you, everyone. So I'm just going to take a slightly different tact. I will say, I had the opportunity to be at a convocation, the African-American, like, student convocation, and I was delighted to be there. Also, I did the Phoenix College graduation and Mesa Community College. You know, there were a couple of things that struck, and there were a lot of other meetings. You don't need to know the list, really. I mean, are you really interested? But we go to a lot of meetings, and I had the privilege, certainly, of working with many of you in multiple meetings. But, you know, as I did all of this, there were a couple of things that struck me. When I walked away from ASU Convention Center on Saturday after shaking the hands of over 500 students, I was tired. And I thought about the night before, when I had been at Phoenix Community College and shaken the hand and stood on stage of, what, 560-plus students? And then heard the cheers and the "go" so-and-so, you know, razz from the audience, it struck me that as we sit in these meetings, that we go to meetings, that we try to do better, that it really is about those people who walk across the stage, who are so excited. They don't care if they have one certificate, or an associate degree, or whatever it is. They accomplish something. And as those stoles on their shoulders represented first generation, or their ethnic connection, or something else that was so important to them, they embody all of the people that we stand for every single day. And I think, besides being tired, all I could think of is, how tired are all of you? I see you as presidents in the audience, as staff people in the audience. You work every single day to make that happen. We get to show up onstage, smile for the camera, or nod, shake those hands. Yeah, we're sweaty with, we're thinking, God, am I, is my hand sweaty? Or is it there? I mean, we're, all of those things are going through your head. But what is really so important, every eye sparkles. And it's because of all of you hanging in there every single day, and the staff you represent, and the faculty you represent, that makes this so important. And it was, as I said, I was tired. You must be super exhausted. I went home and took a nap. Dr. Gonzalez, I don't know if you did. We were walking up together going, God, I'm really tired. Are you going to go home and take a nap? I just want to say thank you. I appreciate what all of you do. We've heard from foundation tonight and all the hard work that goes into ensuring many of the students we shook hands with have scholarships. We did the budget to make sure that people can be adequately paid to do the work and that we have the resources we need to deliver programs. We have presidents who are leading and guiding and creating. We have development directors who are out there working with foundation, but also on that. We have technology that made sure this meeting ran tonight without a glitch and no echoes. Yay, Ryan. Yay. We have Elsa, who ensures that we're on target to do our best work. We have all of you. We have the law enforcement group. It is our privilege to work with you. And as we're coming to the end, true end of the academic year with this May meeting, we've celebrated a lot of folks. But we're really here as board members to support you, to celebrate you, and to say a big thank you for the work you've done. And I hope you get to go home and take a nap whenever you need to, because it's, it's very important. I want to thank all the board members for all the work that they did as well over this May. And we have one more to go, people. We have a January, excuse me, January. Yeah, well, tomorrow's Christmas, right? We have a June 2nd board retreat, and then we draw the fiscal year to a close with the end of June meeting. So our work still continues, but it's your work that goes on every single darn day. And I want to say thank you again, and have you, may you each have a good night, and thank you for hanging in there with us for this meeting. Good night. Meeting stands adjourned.